We're going to have our September 16th, 2014 council meeting. We have a call to order. We're missing two councillors at this time and we hope to see them soon. A prayer will be given by councillor Creed. Welcome councillor Pivoy.
Our Father in Heaven, as we meet again as a council for the community of Carstensham, we first of all thank you for this opportunity and for this community and for all that we are blessed with here. And now we vote by spirit and pray that we will be given wisdom and understanding of the issues which we discussed tonight, that we might be able to understand clearly those things which we discuss and be able to act on them in a fair and an understanding manner. And these things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you very much for your prayer councillor. Okay, we will have some delegations that will come a little bit later on. At this time at 5:45 we have Mr. Shephard that will come to the council for land deal and that will have to be in camera. We also will have later on in camera the Atkin subdivision and discussing some of the elements of that subdivision requirements, which mean I'm going to let you know right away, under 6C it would be prudent for us to deal with that item at that point without having the background and the discussion in camera. So we will ask the media if they want to come back after or in camera, but we do not quite know how long it would be. So that might be a little bit problematic, but I'm letting you know. Okay. Okay, welcome councillor Barfus. We need to look at the item 5, adoption of minutes. We need to adopt the minutes of September 9, 2014.
Do we need ten?
Yeah, sorry, I'm pushing myself a little bit ahead. Thank you councillor. Okay, let's do item 3, additions and adoption of agenda. I have three additions for you.
Item 3 you don't have on my table.
Graham, do you want to help councillor Barnes?
Is it just under agenda?
Just under, oh, okay, I'm good.
Okay, so under 3 we will, under that agenda, under 7C we will add Raymond ACP grant, which stands for Alberta Community Partnership Grant. That will be 7C.
7C.
Under 9B we will have a report by councillor Creed regarding community in bloom, the provincial award ceremony and outstanding as a town. And under 11C we will report on a thank you note that we received.
11D?
11C.
Oh yeah, B, okay. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that'd be useful to turn off your electronics please. Okay, with those additions I need someone to...
Who's that from?
It's a note from the Aspland family, A-S-P-L-A-N-D. Okay. And with those additions I need a motion.
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you councillor Pivoy. Any questions? All in favour? Thank you. Okay, now we need to go to item 5, adoption of minutes. You have the minutes of September 9, 2014 of our regular council meeting. And if you have any questions or...
I'll move to adopt the minutes.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to adopt. Councillor Creed, do you have a question regarding that, those minutes?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. One, just before motion 14122, which was the motion to have administration give us some legal, look into legal advice into pornographic magazines in the community. It was noted in the minutes that the administration presented us with legal advice. Now, I don't remember them presenting any legal advice, but the motion was made for them to look into that.
Correct.
So if that was not, if anybody has a different memory than I do...
No, that is correct. That is a way to treat.
So we just delete that one straight statement then, that they gave us legal advice. Okay, all right.
Well, do you want me to say council discussed the selling or viewing of pornographic materials in public places?
Yeah, it would be discussed, but yeah, I guess we did that.
Yeah, because the motion makes it clear that we are looking for legal advice.
Asking for legal advice, but I think that the administration gave us legal advice, which I didn't remember that they did.
Yeah, no, you're correct. You're correct. Good point. Okay, that should be amended. Any other question?
The other question maybe isn't specific to these minutes, but I did have the question as to the minutes for our special council meeting. They should be approved at some point and I thought it would be on this agenda.
Due to the nature of the timing, it will be at the CCW. October 14th council meeting is when they'll be approved.
Then those minutes will come.
Because that meeting was Thursday afternoon and this agenda was put together Thursday.
So there wasn't time to...
Prior to the meeting actually.
Okay. No, I just had a question.
But let's stick with those.
Yeah, no, that's...
And the other one should be a question. Thank you. So here we have some minutes that have been amended.
So I'll amend my motion to adopt the minutes as amended.
Okay, very well. Councillor Barfus made the motion. All in favour? Thank you. Good point councillor for keeping an eye on those details. Okay, now we have business arising. What I need at this point regarding the bylaw 11610A regarding the intermunicipal business license bylaw, as you will notice is now signed by the RIV, the county RIV. So what I need is a motion for third reading.
I'll make that motion for third reading.
Okay, so councillor Edmond made a motion for third reading and I think we had quite a fair time to discuss those motions. So unless there's any more questions, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favour? Thank you. That is a good move forward and if you realise that fits with our strategic planning, working with a county to improve our working relationship. Main Street crosswalk, I'm sorry there are a few typo in that document, but regardless, I tried to put together the gist of the meeting that we had with the Ministry of Transportation staff in Lesbridge that took place Friday, September the 5th. Marion came with me and this came as a follow-up of Emily Bigman regarding the need to increase pedestrian crossing safety on Highway 2, which is known as Main Street. The concern, as if you remember, was a need for more visibility of the pedestrian crossing area in the 200 and 300 blocks as well as a jaywalking issue. And here are the facts that we discovered was rather interesting. Main Street is a highway. We were reminded of that and as such on a highway motorist as a one that will receive priority regarding safety, pedestrians should not be crossing a highway except at crosswalks, at intersections. So our town is absolutely unique as I mentioned. The light source of the bridge was placed there historically when a whole IGA mall was busy and when a fast food was in a mall location. It was meant to offer safety to pedestrians crossing the road to the provincial building and to the restaurant. If our request is sent to the technical team, we were told that based on the current technical standards, the most likely scenario would be to see the two present crossing completely removed. A scenario worse than what we have. The overhanging signs marking the pedestrian crossing are also unique to Carstensham and are not used elsewhere. In other words, they are there but shouldn't be there. So we looked at it from a different point of view and thought from a town point of view, what can we do to protect our pedestrians. So the first thing that we thought of, actually Marion thought of this possibility, was to remove additional parking stalls on the traffic flow side to increase visibility of pedestrians at the town expense. And less parking doesn't always make everybody happy, but it could help visibility. There are other ways to help, not popular, increase enforcement, RCMP and sheriff. The third one could be a thought, good behaviour incentive to deter youths from crossing in front of Dairy Queen. A bylaw officer could deal with that.
What's he gonna do?
Well, we'll discuss. And we could do education at a high school by the police liaison. So those are decisions that we have to make. Are we in favour of increased enforcement in our town by the RCMP and a sheriff to stop the jaywalking? That's my first question to you. The floor is yours.
So my response would be to that, that I would have no problems with our RCMP who work here being more active, not necessarily giving more tickets. I would have a significant problem with asking the sheriffs to be here more than what they already are.
Okay, that is, so possibly having an RCMP being more visible on Main Street and ticketing people who jaywalk to limit that type of behaviour. Can you show me, because that we can contact the RCMP and give them the feeling or at the next presentation, tell them that that's what we would appreciate seeing in our town to protect our citizens. Councillor Benigri, how do you feel about this one?
I feel that I'm in direct response to councillor Barfus in the fact that a sheriff coming into this town could do a lot more than crosswalks. He could curb the parking in front of the post office. He could do a lot more. He could enforce parking. He can enforce some of our bylaws. And coming into this town, they don't live here, they don't know anybody and they leave at night. And I think it's time we cleaned up the town. We have a parking mayhem in front of the post office at noon times from about 11:30 to 1:30 in the afternoon and then again at 4 o'clock in the evenings. We have mayhem down on May Street. They're parking in the handy bus parking. They're parking on the crosswalks.
They do U-turns?
Yeah, they're doing U-turns where they shouldn't be doing U-turns. We've got parking violations. And the thing about a sheriff's officer, an RCMP officer, they have their own lawyers. So the town would not, I don't think, have to hire a lawyer to deal with those tickets that are handed out in town. Now, our bylaw officer has no authority to give those kinds of tickets out. Furthermore, he has no authority and he can't use the CPIC system anymore with the RCMP, you know. I just, I feel really good about having a sheriff come into town, three days a week even. And I think we would see a lot of curb of illegal activity going on.
Okay. Councillor Pivoy?
I can't help but wonder that it isn't maybe education that's a bit of a problem. You know, I think sometimes when people cross, they think, well, hey, this is okay. This is okay. I mean, everybody else is doing it. It's okay. But if we got word out that, no, it's not okay, we don't jaywalk in Carstensham, you know, or some kind of slogan like that. And then I think that the law-abiding folk would just kind of maybe check themselves as they were about to cross thinking, well, three parking spaces further down is a crosswalk. Maybe I should use that. So if we just kind of maybe had an approach where education was the emphasis and we just say, hey, look, reality is jaywalking in Carstensham, not okay.
Okay.
Because some might think, you know, actually, I don't think it's enforceable. You know, there's rumours like that. It's not important, it's not, blah, blah. Nobody cares in Carstensham. Whereas if we come out as a council and say, you know what, we do care. It is an issue. Please be mindful of it. Don't be a part of the problem. You know, that kind of thing. Then hopefully we would see an improvement through education.
The issue is the definition of jaywalking according to the RCMP. Their definition is if you don't obstruct traffic, you could be considered as not jaywalking. If you obstruct traffic in a car or truck or whatever that is moving has to stop for you, then you're truly jaywalking. It's a fine line.
Especially when I'm seeing them do it themselves. I mean, they do.
Madam Chairwoman, I might suggest we do have the policing ad hoc committee meeting set for October 3rd with the new staff, with the new sergeant. And so perhaps this is an item that could be put on the agenda, how best to address it with the current police force that we have. As well, I've got some information that I was intending to bring to that meeting with regards to the Raymond's bylaws consortium that they've created, the peace officer consortium.
Yes, which is really interesting.
And that may be an opportunity to address some of the things that councillor Benigri has talked about if we look at it on a broader scale.
Right. I really think that's a very good point. Councillor Creed, do you want to talk to this issue?
Just mention, you know, when we have the staff sergeant give the report, they always ask us what our priorities are. If that is a priority we would like them to address, they would be happy to do that. I also believe as councillor Pivoy talked about, education, if we was to increase education in our community, those would be the two areas that I would be in favour. But as Marion has brought up, that meeting would be a great time to discuss that further.
Thank you councillor Barnes.
I guess the question I have is how, have we had some accidents as a result? People getting hurt, jaywalking. That's why I'm wondering how serious a problem is this actually or is it, or is it just a principle we're trying to approach here?
We had one casualty last year. Not, it's a result of jaywalking, but it's a little bit more complex than that.
I mean, I know the thing that I find more bothersome than jaywalking is the U-turns. Right where I have my business, the LDS bookstore has an overabundance of U-turners. It's happening all the time. I'm outside there and I see them do it and I wait for them to get out and then I go over to them and remind them that, the first day I moved into Carstensham, 40 years ago, I got a ticket for doing what they just did.
So did I the first day I moved into Carstensham.
You got one too.
So they know who newcomers are.
Okay.
So, but I look at that, not because I got a ticket, but because I didn't understand at that time what I had done. But I can see the danger. That to me is more dangerous than anything because you've got people coming and I, a lot of these people, it's a last minute thing. They don't signal, they just pull up in front of traffic and everything. And it can be really hazardous. Somebody's gonna get hurt one of these days with that.
Councillor Edmonds?
I think regardless of what you do, you'll never curtail it completely. I've been trying, been trying in Calgary for the last 20 years. They creased the fines, they've done everything they can, the people still do it. If it's 40 below and you can get from me to be the shortest distance, that's what you're gonna do.
Okay. I think, I think if we bring it back to our meeting with the RCMP, let's try to gather a little bit more ideas and try to see how we could solve some of those issues. Marion?
The other thing I think we need to clarify here is the request from our MLA was not in regards to jaywalking. It was with regards to...
Same point.
...intercept those crosswalks. So it may be appropriate that we send a letter back to him just outlining our discussion that we had with Alberta Transportation so that he knows we did follow through.
Yeah, I really, totally in agreement with that and I think council, you would agree?
Yeah, absolutely.
A follow-up letter would be good. But for our own self in town, we need to push the issue a little bit further.
Do we need to have a motion to send that letter?
Yes, it would be a useful thing.
So I'll move that we write a letter to our MLA thanking him for his support on that and give him the details of what our results were.
Thank you. All in favour? Okay, good. All right. The Atkin subdivision, as I said, before we grant an extension, whatever we do with the extension as council, we need to understand all the details. So as I said, we'll do it after we come back out of camera. Hopefully we'll have enough information then to make it, to make a wise decision. Okay, so let's go to 7, request for decision. As you can see, there is 7A, Carstensham and District Fish and Game Association. That is an association that is interested in bringing back to our town the game of archery or the skill of archery. That was done in a basement of this very building for many, many years and Reeve Lacy reminded me of that and spoke to me regarding that, telling me everything seems to still be in place. The issue here is that we have some storage that is, has been given for the gymnastics club and a lot of their mats and padding and whatever else they use is there and is a little bit acting as an obstruction for the venue to resume archery there. So my question to administration maybe would be, could it be possible for administration to sit down with gymnastic, those who are part of that club and with a theatre who also use an awful lot of our storage downstairs and to try to figure out if there is a way somewhere, somehow, to find more storage place for either of them? Could it be possible?
Yes, of course that's possible. Administration's recommendation is that this be referred to the Parks and Recreation Department because that is the committee. That's the committee that oversees that activity in the community. And then their recommendation, I would assume, would be that those parties all get together and come to a solution. But it should go to that committee.
I agree with you. It is part of the recreation and should go through that committee. So hopefully one of the ideas would be to bring people together.
Yeah, I've spent quite a bit of time in the basement of this building and I can tell you from experience that as long as gymnastics needs to store their stuff, it will be almost impossible to find a way to also accommodate the old archery range down there. So, I mean, that is gonna be a challenge. We have a current standing agreement with gymnastics.
Yes, we do.
I personally would love to see that archery range restored, but I know how much stuff they have to put in there. And there's, I mean, from what I've seen, there's nowhere else it can go when it has to be stored. And so that, you know, that will be a challenge. I'm looking forward to that report. But it's, I'm just saying, you know, ahead of time, it's unlikely that they'll find a way to work around that because there is so much equipment that has to be stored.
Well, councillor Pivoy, would you agree that...
I'll make the motion to, you know, if there needs to be a motion, there doesn't need to be a motion.
Yes, we do need a motion.
Yeah. So I move to recommend to the committee for Parks and Rec to form a, what, a subcommittee? Is that what we're recommending?
No.
No, just to meet with and discuss.
To look into, to discuss the archery as...
Discuss the storage and the potential for adding the archery range back in that basement.
Yes.
There used to be a shooting range down there at one time as well.
Well, that was before they made all of those rooms. When there was still a lot of dirt down in there before they did the renovations to the building.
Okay. Marion? I was just in reference to councillor Pivoy's concerns. One of the things we've discussed is administratively is potentially the archery could take place during the same timeframe as a gymnastics, because we recognise that they do need a location to store their stuff. So there may be something we can work out.
All right. So we have a motion on the table. All in favour? Thank you. Archery is becoming very popular again and I think would be a nice way for kids to get occupied.
Okay. I have a question before we move on. If, if the archery took place during this same season as the, as the gymnastics club, then we don't have an issue, do we?
We still have an issue.
A little issue, there's still...
There is still a little bit of storage issue.
Is there?
Yeah, there is. Okay. All right. B, 7B Creek Bank remediation. Marion, I would appreciate if you could explain what the grant application covers, please.
Thank you, Your Honour. As you're aware, we've had significant damage to the creek bank along both the golf course, at the campground and at one of our intake locations on Lake Creek. We've, we did submit an application for funding to the disaster recovery programme. That programme has not been announced to date. I did speak with that representative today and the application is before the Finance Ministry awaiting approval. But of course with all the changes in government right now, they can't give me any kind of indication as to when we may see an answer on that funding. I also told them that our initial estimates, where we thought we had some potentially minor damage, has significantly increased in cost. Once we have the engineers actually on site and do some formal assessment of that, we're looking at, if we were to do full remediation, $2.377 million, which is significant. I did pass the estimate on to the disaster funding people today and said I wanted them to consider that as part of the core application.
Marion, if I understand, this grant covers 90% if we were to be successful? Or does it cover 100%?
The grant I'm talking about is a disaster recovery.
Oh, fine.
Which is 100% funding and that is to, you know, the definition of a disaster is it has to be widespread and all of that. And so the province has not deemed that the 2014 event of June 16th is a disaster at this point. But it appears that there may be some approval, but there's no guarantees at this point. And also our application, there's no guarantee that they will fund the entire portion of it. But that was the first application we made and we're hoping that we can get 100% funding, but I'm not going to hold my breath because I want to live a little longer than that. So there's a number of locations on the golf course. One, the critical area is at the bridge, so that we don't lose the bridge. We also... We also have another critical area at the campground, and then our intake location, I believe, are the three priority areas that we've...
Identified, yes.
Yes. That we've identified. So what we've looked at here as a second alternative is, we've prepared a grant application for the Community Resilience Program, which was announced this year. That's the grant that you're talking about, is 90% funding would take 10% town funds. Again, in talking with some people who've had some experience, in particular our engineer, who's made some applications for other projects around the province, and their company has, I'm concerned that just creek bank remediation is not going to meet the criteria of this grant as well, because it appears that their intent is that it's a much larger project that would potentially divert almost in the future, like maybe building better stormwater management ponds, those kind of things that, for those events to help alleviate the pressure in the future, not just remediate the banks, if that makes sense. But we're gonna give it our best shot, as long as we have counsel's approval tonight, which we would need a resolution to support this grant application and the three priorities that we've identified in the grant as the areas of priority for remediation.
Okay, Marian, so if I understand, the motion you want is to approve the priorities as set up in a grant, in a hope that we would have that grant?
Yeah, the motion would be to support the application with those three priorities, correct. But again, there's never a guarantee on these competitive grants that we're going to get the funding, but if you don't ask, you don't receive, so...
But I'm just wondering, we want to make sure that it is worded properly, meaning that it is conditional on the approval of the grant?
No.
Because I don't want a motion to be open for $2 million, and I'll have a sudden stop with it.
Yeah, your resolution will not be to spend the $2 million, your resolution will be to support the application of the grant, for the application to be submitted with those three priorities.
Okay, so so long we understand the intent. Okay? Thank you. So, want you to go on?
I'd just like to...
Question?
Ask Marian a question, on the option too, that grant, the $2 million, $2.14 million, is that the actual amount of the grant that's available, or is that the amount of grant that we could apply for?
The grant that's available is up to $3 million.
It's up to $3 million?
So we will apply for the full cost of our project, and that would be our, the $2.2 million would be the 90% of our total $2.3 million.
Okay, because my question was, is that if we was to word it in a way that we're doing a little bit more than just a remediation, you know, adding something in there, if it would, you know, we could make it fit a little better?
Yeah, we have tried to word the grant to meet the criteria, but at the end of the day, we can't promise that we're going to do things that we're not going to do, so we have to be a little bit cautious of that. But we have tried to make sure that the wording in the grant somehow supports that criteria.
Yeah, or something like if we, you know, in doing the creek bank, if we were to add a little catch basin somewhere, or overflow area, or something that would actually...
Upstream.
You know, meet the required criteria of the grant, you know, that...
Upstream.
This is why I'm exploring here, I'm sorry.
Not being an engineer, yeah, but I guess my first hesitation on that would be to simply engineer a little overflow area is probably well beyond our means, because the province no longer just accepts any type of that work without some very sound engineering behind it, and some expensive...
Studies.
Infrastructure put into that, right? So we have to be a little bit cautious about that.
Wouldn't it go way beyond the $3 million, the total $3 million available, is what you're saying, to do that plus the remediation?
Yeah, when you think about this as being, you know, rebuilding the creek bank with some riprap and some stability there, at being $2.3 million, you can imagine what building those other components may be, right? Now, I'm not saying that we won't receive the grant, I'm just trying to prepare counsel with the information that I've been given, that we can't just assume that this is going to be a big deal. One of the things, though, that I think we need to recognize here is that we are going to have to do something there. We can't...
Ignore it.
We can't ignore it. There's some key areas that have to be addressed. Now, the engineer has told me that depending on our funding level, he can try to develop a plan that would almost stage the repair, so we don't have to feel like if it's either $2.3 million or nothing. He feels that if we have a reasonable amount that we feel we can spend on this project, that he would try to work in those key areas, some type of remediation that would at least solve it for the short term.
In other words, we could do it over one year, two years, where you kind of...
Yeah, we could continue to add to that. And just as an example, one of the things we've done on the St. Mary's intake is, we had one year that we did some major work, and then the next year we put out some, the figures, we talked about that a couple of meetings ago. So when we put those out into the channel, we weren't sure whether one, or two, or four was required, right? So we put a couple out there with the intent that we would add to those over time if we needed. And it seems to be holding, but we're watching it very closely, and we monitor it every year, and we actually have additional material out there, that if we have to put the additional vein out into the river, we'll be able to do that. So those are some of the things that you can do, that you don't have necessarily, the ultimate engineering would say, yes, do all of this, but there's potential that we could do this in stages.
Okay. Counselor Bang, Counselor Baff, who's Counselor Bang read? Go ahead.
Okay. You mentioned that there's a little bit of problem with the bridge stability. Now, that's not just remediation, that's, and we're trying to make sure that that bridge doesn't wash away, right?
Right, correct.
That could go in there as part of our application.
It is, yeah.
Okay, it's in there.
It is included as part of it.
So we're not just talking about creek bank remediation, we're talking about preventative measures, so that bridge is gonna wash out, and we're not gonna lose a road.
Right, and that is part of the application, because we're saying for community resilience, we need to protect our infrastructure.
Right.
And one part of our infrastructure is the bridge. Another part is, we, at the campground, we have underground infrastructure that is starting to become exposed, so we need to protect that.
We need to protect that.
And then the third is our intake, our raw water intake, so we need to protect that. What I'm seeing is, they may not look at the entire project as fitting the criteria, but there might be components of it that they do.
Yeah.
And that's why we've identified those three key areas as our top priorities, because that's where our infrastructure is most at risk. Now, if you talk to golfers, you know, the golf course is at risk as well, they've lost a substantial amount of number 18, even since the dam, because of the erosion from the creek, so there's some additional work there, but this may be, at the end of the day, the project may end up being a component of a number of funding sources, to be able to finish the entire project. So if we get X amount of dollars from disaster funding, and we get X amount of dollars from the Community Resilience Program, and we get X amount of money out of some of our grants, you know, maybe that's the way that we have to fund it.
Good, thank you.
Counselor Baff first?
Just so that I have more detail, what kind of timeframe, what kind of damage are they looking at that's been done to, for example, the bridges?
Well, right now...
Obviously, it's not imminent, or we'd be closing down the bridge.
No, and right now, the bridge is fine. It's just the upstream of the bridge, there's been some significant erosion, and just slightly downstream, right at the structure, but on the downstream side. So that's critical, that we need to deal with that, before we have another event, because we could potentially then, it could be imminent, right? So we have an application into Alberta Environment for two things. One is for the remediation, and the other is to get all the debris out of the creek. You know, there's a lot of stuff laying around the bridge decks and that kind of stuff that we need to deal with. But of course, you're not having all the approvals for that, so...
Yeah, that is a question that was asked by citizens, why have we not removed the debris at the Third Avenue Bridge? And that was my answer to them, unless we have an approval from the Ministry of Environment, you can't not even remove the debris from the area, I mean, as crazy as it sounds, that's the way it goes. It sounds crazy.
I don't understand that.
Neither do I.
Well, she's going to disturb...
No, we don't want to disturb a few fishes.
Two questions, Marian. One was that removal of stuff in the creek bank, in the creek area below, but the first question is, will this take into the remediation of the bank below Cooley Creek Drive, where it's falling into the creek? Where the hill's...
That's one of the areas we've looked at, but the more critical part of that corner is on the campground side. You're talking West Creek Drive?
Yes.
Yeah, the more critical damage that is sustained there right now is on the east side of the creek, on the campground side, where we're at a position where, if we have another event, we're potentially exposing some major destruction.
Then have we got Alberta highways involved in this? Because 9th Avenue is a highway, and then 9th Avenue Bridge, can we involve them?
That is the bridge.
That's not on our priority list, and actually, when the mayor and I met with Transportation, I brought it to their attention, and I haven't heard back from their bridge people, so that would be up to Alberta Transportation to deal with that.
Well, we got that, we got the Main Street Bridge.
We have five bridges altogether.
Which is Alberta Transportation as well.
Yeah, and also our secondary bypass.
First Avenue.
Right.
Those are all Alberta Transportation responsible.
Who owns that bridge?
Madam Chairman, if I can just, there's a couple of other funding options here. I asked Noel to put together some information for you, over and above the grant, or applications that we've already submitted, or will submit if we receive support from counsel tonight on the Community Resilience Grant. One of the other options is, right now, with Alberta Capital Finance, you can borrow for a fairly decent rate, so that's something maybe that counsel wants to throw into the mix of things. I am in no way, at this point, standing up here and recommending that we borrow $2.3 million, so please don't think that's what I'm recommending, but it could be a component of the funding. And then the fourth option would be, the federal gas taxes, you're aware, they've opened up the criteria on that grant, so we can look at, at that grant, we received $194,000 this year, in 2015, we anticipated $198,000. And our MSI capital would also qualify in that $610,000. The difficulty with both of those is that we have projects earmarked through 2017 currently, and when you get the budget presented to you in October, you're gonna see projects through 2018 that these grants are earmarked for, so it would mean counsel having to really debate the priority use of those funds, and perhaps some of those other projects may have to be put on hold if this is deemed to be a priority, and I would suggest that there is some areas of it that should be a priority at this point. So tonight, we're really looking for the motion to support the Community Resilience Program.
All right, so Counselor Bang, please?
I'll also move that we make application, or Director of Administration, to make application for the Community...
Resilience Program.
The Resilience Program.
You need to state the priorities, I think, in your motion. Am I correct?
Yes.
Marian?
The priorities are what? Three priority areas?
The three priority as listed on your...
The first priority is the municipal bridge located at the golf course. The second priority is the water, the raw water intake on the creek. And the third priority is the water and sewer infrastructure located near the town's campground.
So moved, thank you.
Any questions? Counselor Bevoi?
I'll just ask Marian one more about the bridge, since we were talking about bridges up here a minute. Somewhere in the background, it was mentioned that the town had responsibility for two bridges, and three bridges were the responsibility of the provincial government because of their highways. One bridge was omitted from that, which would be the Remington Carriage Center Bridge, which I was wondering, does the town have responsibility for that bridge?
Counselor Federal, no? Um, yes, I would assume so. I can't tell you, I apologize, I forgot about that one, but...
Maybe you want to check that and let us know next time, or what?
Yeah, it's a footbridge, and then the carriages use it, it's not a, but I'll look into that, but I believe so, because it ties in with our town's system.
Yeah, I just curious, but you'd mentioned five bridges, but there is that additional bridge that was mentioned.
Good point.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on table, all in favor? Thank you. All right, I see that we have a delegation. Jim, I'm just going to ask you a question. Would it be okay if we could take 10 minutes of your time to finish a little bit of business, because then we have to excuse the media? Thank you so much, appreciate that. Okay, so Marian, do you want to talk about 7C, the Raymond ACP grant, that we are trying to apply for, that Raymond, Alberta Community Partnership? It has to do with waste management, and Marian could maybe address that, it's something quite fresh off the press, and so that is, this application that you have on the front of you, okay, from the town of Raymond?
So the town of Raymond was, I was just contacted this morning, so I apologize for the addition here without a lot of background for counsel, but the town of Raymond was in discussions with the Village of Sterling regarding regional domestic garbage and recycling collection, and one of the things they were looking at there basically is trying to put bins, garbage bins, curbside in Sterling, just like they have in Raymond, and then adding the recycling bins in Raymond, and potentially in Sterling, and doing some substantial upgrades to the Raymond transportation. The Village of Sterling has chosen, their council has chosen not to proceed with the project, and so I was contacted by Raymond to see if we would be interested in partnering with them on this project. The details, of course, because we just talked this morning, have not been worked out, and the grant application doesn't require all of the details, but the gist of it would be that between the town of Raymond and the town of Cardston, the town of Cardston would be able to fund the supply of these curbside bins in the community through this grant, and potentially the recycling bins as well. And I anticipate as well that we would be able to do some additional upgrades at the transfer station to accommodate some of our recycling needs. I did send out to you, I believe, earlier this week, or the end of last week, the waste composition study that has now been released to the Board of Directors and the Chief of National Waste Authority, and there's some good information in there about what's happening at our transfer station. Now, understanding that all of the waste there doesn't come from the town of Cardston residents, it's from a regional level, but if we can provide some opportunities out there for people to enhance their recycling, I think that we'll see those numbers drop substantially. This council has not talked about this, but previous councils have talked about doing the bins, the curbside bins, and I feel that this is an opportunity for us to have this funded through the grant program. funded through a grant program. In year one, if that's why the rush is here, because you have to have your application in by September 30th for the year one, there's no requirement for matching dollars at all, and so we're trying to take advantage of all of that what we can. The second part of this is, where was I going with that? Sorry, that once the best practices study is done, I think we'll have some evidence to support some of the, the projects here that we're interested in. I talked with Darcy Beamer, who is our current contractor, and I just didn't want him to be blindsided by hearing this on the street, that the council's pursuing this potentially, and when, when we awarded his contract back in 2011, we'd had some conversation about council moving forward with this idea, and he was open to be, still being the supplier of the truck and all of that if he was awarded the contract, and so I asked him if that was still the case, and he said yes. Now, his contract expires in 2016, so potentially we would just be about where we were ready to launch this, if it's, if it all works out, about the time his contract expires, and, and would be re-tendered at that point, so.
Okay.
That's just a little background on that. So if council supports the concept-
You need a motion.
We will need a motion.
Okay, so in support of the grant application?
Correct.
Okay, Councilor Barnes?
I would be prepared to some, make that motion to, to go into partnership with Raymond on this application to help enhance our-
ACP grant?
The ACP grant, so that we might be able to improve our garbage collection, and therefore help with our recycling and make it better.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so that, we could go, there is no financial report this time, if we take nine, and then we could excuse the media. Nine A is a town council motion list, you all have had a chance to look at it, any question regarding this? No? Okay.
I just have one quick one.
Please go ahead.
Did we, did we talk about the media release grant to correct that amount of money?
Okay, the media release-
It went out.
It went out.
I just haven't seen it in the paper yet.
Okay, so, community-
Did it go, sorry if I might, did we put it in this year, this week's Municipal Matters, correct?
Yeah, okay, fine. We don't need to take any action regarding that one. Nine B, a community in Bloom, Councilor Creed wanted to do a little bit of an announcement.
All right.
Go ahead.
Yes, so Mayor Cronin and myself, and Carol Summerfeld, who is the, the chairman of the CIV Committee, went to Raymond for the, the CIV awards, we-
To the Tabor.
To Tabor, I guess we've been talking about Raymond, sorry, to Tabor, right town, to the CIV awards, we entered the, as, as a competitive community for the communities in Bloom this year, we received five Blooms, which is-
Five.
The maximum that they give, we didn't quite win, we, I think that another community got, also got five Blooms, Hannah, yeah, they were just a little ahead of us, that's okay, that means that we can still win next time.
And one project that was recognized as being a very worthwhile for the community was a project between our police officer and Horton, working with those who had to work in our community to pay for their funds, and I found that a very progressive way to look at matters in our community.
Yes, they highlighted, yes, they highlighted that aspect of using the, you know, the Fine Options Program with, with Horton and our bylaw officer Lloyd to, to keep the community clean. I would actually like to request administration, we, we also received the, the feedback from the judges on all of, all of the categories, and I gave it, I gave that to Tara, asked her to make some copies of that, and I would like to request administration to actually add that report to the Sky Drive for, for all of the councils, I, I think that would be really helpful if we could all read that, because it gives us some, some suggestions-
In six different categories?
In, in those six different categories of ways that we can improve our community, and I think it would be very valuable if we could all have a chance to see that and, and read that, so if that could be-
I have one other, then.
Is that on the agenda?
Well, it's on here, it's in regards to the, in progress on our motion list.
He's just backing up-
So you're backing up to nine A?
Yep.
All right, go ahead.
Maggie McDonald.
On the Maggie McDonald letter, I, I discussed in, in the library meeting the other day, but are concerned with the continual increases every year-
Right.
For the next four years, and, and I thought it would be proper for us if somebody from the Shinokarts, either Robin or Maggie, do come here, and we ask them, where is their priority list, and why is, is there something that they could do to maybe reduce their budget so that our increases aren't going up 3% per year? I don't know if I've mentioned that, do you?
Yes, I placed a call to Maggie, I believe I, sorry if I, I'm trying to remember if it was one call or two calls-
Yeah.
But I've left a message with her, and wanting that council wanted to have her attend, and I also spoke with her, with one of the secretaries there at one point, and she said, yes, Maggie's the person, but I just haven't followed up as of last week because of all the other stuff that's been going on.
Okay, is that the, the library board meeting, they were, they were concerned too, and they'd asked me to maybe talk with some of the other member communities, member councils, so that, you know, that, find out what their feelings are as well, because it does take a two-thirds majority to approve their budget increases.
Is that, is that the regional, the goal of the Salma of Alberta? Do you want me to bring that issue at the mayor's and review?
I would love it if you would, yes, please.
So yeah, the note on here is, I left the message for her on September 3rd.
Yes.
Okay, I will-
Because we have until the 14th of November to-
Yeah, I apologize for all the other stuff, I have made a secondary call.
We'll have a meeting in October, meeting in October, I will bring that issue forward.
And we might see them also at the AUMAs as well.
We'll do our best to-
Chat with them.
Let them know.
I was just going to suggest that Maggie's always at the AUMA.
Yeah.
Would it be prudent for us to just have a, a little meeting with her in, in one of the motel rooms?
If I might, because this is a concern of the region, I think what would be more appropriate is if you, you could address it with her when you see her there, but I think it would be better if it's done in a public meeting-
Yeah.
And perhaps the county and the library board could be invited to attend when she presents, or if she can make a county meeting, maybe we go there or whatever, but it, it just may be better because it's more than just our issue to her publicly.
All right, our delegation has been waiting for a long time, so we need to-
More questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I was going to put this in under questions, but it actually relates to the communities in Bloom as well, and, and the cleanups. We had a spring town cleanup, but our council discussed earlier the possibility of a fall cleanup, since people can't, you know, put their yard and their garden waste, you know, in the, in the garbage, that we discussed having a town fall cleanup when, when we would pick up yard wastes and things like that, and-
Yeah, and that's against the volume.
Yes.
Last year we did that, I believe it was the first week of November, and I anticipate it'll be sometime around that time again, just, you know, mid-October to end of October where we can get all that garden waste as well.
Well, you know, there's not going to be any snow again.
Yeah, we could have done it in August then, if that's-
Yeah, right, so if we, if we know that date a little bit ahead, if we could advertise it in her-
We will.
And that would be, that would be great, thank you.
All right, I think we're going to stop right at this point, and we're going to excuse the media, under correspondence, quickly, municipal affair is just a, a letter to let us know that we have money coming. Under OHS, it is a report that deals with the SSRP, the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan, and to let us know that further feedback will come when policies and plans will be in place. We do not have that, and then we have a thank you, maybe I'll read it for the benefit of all peoples. Dear Alexis Cami and all of you, Utown of Cardston people, on July 25, members of the family of Bernard Aspland visited your council chambers, there were around 50 of us, and we were there to see the wall of honor. We would like to offer heartfelt words of appreciation for the superb contribution you made with that project, absolutely first class, sincerely, Jim Aspland. Nice comment, and I thought it would be a nice thing to pass a kudos to former councillor Court, who was the one who spearheaded that project. Okay, so without any further delay, we're going to have to call a motion to go in camera. Counselor?
I'll move to go in camera.
Thank you. Thank you to the media, very much appreciated, all in favor? Thank you.